... on Manton Community Council that meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it was pretty obvious that they were upset over the transportation system. They had a representative department transportation went at the office at that meeting. And I chatted with him some length and he also felt that we need a complete analysis of traffic situation in the valley, not the city of Shalan, but to break it down. Probably void really how many people go up there so we know exactly how many people use the Manton Highway. The bridge crossings on Wooden Avenue, how much is that because it's probably reversing. We had the opportunity to make the bridge two way. The decisions on Saunders, Wooden and then on out towards Ice School, all those numbers you need to compile. But now with what's happened at Walmart, I think we also need to push that out. Highway ninety seven A and one fifty, so we know what that impact's going to be with the warehouse, everything. So we were on the internet today with the Shalonic Commissioners. And Kevin also brought that he's going to push from his end to try to put some pressure on DOT to do a complete analysis as well as us. So I agree, that's where we started. But the answer is we're not going to find the mystery step out in the abyss. And I don't think we're already, but we need to look. But that's where I'm at with DOT traffic analysis.
Yeah, yeah, some good comments. I, I don't have a great answer necessarily, but I, I, I agree with need to start somewhere. And I think even identifying it as a priority in our tip and maybe putting it heavily contributed by maybe our partners or state or other local funds and, and work to create some sort of. Obviously, it's going to be a county, state, potentially federal type of cooperative project.
To that point, this list of projects that we have on here. How were these identified? Are they identified by things that you guys have seen in public works or us? Because, you know, in a perfect world, we have a, a map of a heat map of the city of where issues are. And that's what informs this list of projects. But this list of projects has been the same for a really long time. And our city has changed quite a bit. So having that overarching transportation analysis, I guess, would be helpful to really have an informed list of what our true priorities are for transportation.
I hundred percent agree. And we've been making steps to get to that point. We recently just retained a street consulting engineering firm that we will utilize to look at a comprehensive plan that we can hopefully develop a funding mechanism, or at least a plan for, and what we potentially execute. It would be probably a mix of heavily used analytical data like pavement condition ratings and things like that. So you're making wise investments in your infrastructure, but also council certainly does have an influence on different parties as well. So I will mention that this is a, we just retained, we went through an RQ process and interviews and just selected and, and we put it under contract. A new consulting firm for our streets. And so this is an amendable document. One of the thoughts I had was re-engaging with council. At a later date, once they understand our infrastructure a little bit better, maybe are able to help facilitate that discussion and then relook at our tip and maybe amend it accordingly.
So to be clear, the group that you guys just interviewed and hired is looking at more of the state of our streets versus the traffic.
Yeah, at this point, we can ask them to, to, to do that. They'll, they'll be our on-call service provider.
Or to reach into the state to do it with their money and our spending hours.
Yeah.
Except that the state continually, the Manton Community Council, repeated these states that what you got is what you're going to get. They, they, the state is actually of no interest from what I witness. Of engaging us.
It does seem that the city taking the lead sometimes results in projects being evaluated more on our timeframe and not the state's. For instance, all these traffic studies and trying to ask for the city to get a grasp on what are. So we're going to be implementing traffic counters here while school's still in session, just right at the tail end here. Or it was done last week, actually. And we'll have updated data, twenty twenty-two data that hopefully paints a little bit better picture that we can figure out where we're going with traffic. But all these, ironically, all these studies are funded by the state because we requested money from the state to do them for a state highway at city limits, if that makes sense. So, so they're funding a project that we decided was a priority and we asked them for funding.
I think the city going by ourselves, we, we have some luck, but to get these bigger things that we need addressed, it includes, it's a partnership. So we have to build that relationship and we already have it. Overbay already recognizes that's an issue. And he's Transportation Council. Bob's got a great relationship with him. So it's a coming together, not just the city, but it's also at the council level to make that happen. So I think it's on the way. I just didn't know that overarching, those two projects, overarching for Shalan and Highway one fifty alternative route should be something on our tip.
Any other questions, comments? Then I will open the public hearing at six twenty. Is there any comments submitted to the court or any further comments to the audience? See, you may remember that. Before we have a hat, we will close the meeting. For the council, I'd like for their comments. So it would be a pleasure. Actually, same at this time, we'll move on to volleyball, sand court agreement. Mr. Horn?
Yes, Mayor, Council. The two beach volleyball club has been using the courts for seven years now. Previously, they enjoyed pre-use of the courts. We evaluated and documented contributions to the creation of those courts and a little bit of history of how this came about and how they've been used. We had a council work session that looked at a framework for making a decision on how much to subsidize a program along the spectrum of maximizing revenue versus subsidizing things for the public benefit. And got good feedback from council informally in that session. And there's no right answer. There's community values and history and other things that are involved, but typically concessions and, and things that have more than individual benefit or a certain pay or higher percentage of fees and things that provide more broad-based benefit or it would be subsidized more. We have a self-sufficient park system, so there's really not much access to it. So it's sufficient. But what I heard at the work session was that there is a strong value system here in Shalan to support this group. And we come up with a fee structure that provides us with at least cost recovery for the maintenance that we do. But not a lot more than that. And this is, what represents a significant increase from pre-use, which has been the past six years. So we are work out an arrangement where this year we are not charging fees because the rates change mid-season. They already have a season established, so they've already released those fees. Twenty twenty-three, we see rates of twenty-seven fifty per year. And twenty twenty-four, a rate of three thousand dollars per year. So happy to hear your discussion about this topic.
Would stay at three thousand? Do you want a sliding scale that will increase each year or?
That would be in twenty twenty-four. So yes, it's incrementally going up this year.
So each year, a little bit more.
Right.
I think the most important thing is to have an appearance of fairness to the businesses that are for-profit. Even though this is set up as a nonprofit, there, there's some profit there. So I'm curious, does the under four point six periodic accounting, does that start this October?
They can provide these numbers. So yes, they'll continue to provide those in October.
That continue what they're paying, that include what they're paying themselves? Or, I guess, how full of the kind, it's hard to make a decision with this about knowing the real numbers. It's a uneducated decision.
I can help with that. So you're asking how much they make per year?
I'm, I'm curious under periodic accounting, how detailed that's going to be? Because they're using city property.
It's a fairly broad profit-loss statement, which I'm happy to share with council.
I haven't.
Does that make sense? You know, like the people that rent kayaks and the goat cart to have an appearance of fairness with those folks as to them paying nothing for the last six years?
That's the kind of guidance we really wanted to get at the work session. We tried to lay out the framework of this pyramid of cost benefit that we have. And weighing those values from revenue for the same versus subsidy for
It's a great program. My daughter's been in it and it's obviously paying dividends at the high school level. In order to make an educated decision, it seems like we would have to have more detailed numbers. Are these, are these numbers reflecting fair market value or is it just a starting, just a starting point?
It depends if there's another group that's wanting to use those courts, right? So the market's what, you know, there's without being new courts at the community center perhaps. Even after those are built, this group still wants to use our court. It's a bit of a tangent from the question, but you know, the market is the demand for the use of those courts. So barring another group that's coming in and saying, we want to use this property for our volleyball. The market rate is, you know, more flexible. That said, I agree that these rates could be higher. That's the feedback that I wanted from the work session to kind of get a sense of where council's been upon, on that pyramid. And from feedback I heard, this was that form these rates more on the term subsidy than profit.
So I'm going to provide a little, there's a lot of information that's kind of missing out of here. I just want to provide some context for the rest of the council. When, when it's noted that this group has used the courts for free for the past six years, I, I disagree with that because in their contract since twenty sixteen, it's been outlined that they are getting, they're providing a thousand dollars in value in terms of maintenance of the courts as well as they provide a truck full of sand valued at fifteen hundred dollars. So they have been providing twenty-five hundred dollars either in kind or in services. So to say that they're using those courts for free is not necessarily true. I also wanted to point out the amount of time in the, I think, in the, the meeting that I wasn't able to be at. It's noted that the club uses the courts four days a week or an hour, or four hours a day. And when you do the math on that, and I did it from June through August, assuming a, a normal day would be eight in the morning until eight in the evening, knowing that you can still play on those courts till about nine thirty-nine, forty-five. But I did twelve hours a day. That the club is using those courts for twenty-seven percent of this time during the summertime. And up there for weekends that they use for tournaments, it's twenty-eight percent of the weekends. The rest of the time, those courts are open and free to the public for our community to use. They, I, I also had an issue around the rates proposed are more or less break-even rates to cover peripheral maintenance operations and those include irrigation, which I'm not sure where that irrigation is, trash removal, mowing around the courts, which is, there's already grass there. There was less grass there than when the courts weren't there. Breaking and other periodic maintenance, which I would say that's a benefit for our community. The club takes care of their courts when they use their courts. And then looking at also the report using the Skyhawks, which is a for-profit organization. You noted that they, they provide the city eight point four percent of their gross revenues. And I would say, let's use the same thing if we did that for Cahill. They generate fifty thousand dollars in revenue and have fifty-one thousand dollars in expenses. So they're not breaking even, but if you use their fifty thousand in revenue and times that eight point four percent, that is forty-two hundred dollars. And then let's go ahead and minus what they provide in return for their maintenance and sand value, which is twenty-five hundred. We're looking at seventeen hundred. So I, I'm struggling to see where, how we're, we're taking a model that was pointed out in the, in the previous document. And if you apply that same rationale to a nonprofit organization that actually breaks even or under and is using the court less than thirty percent of the time, and the rest of the time, the community is getting to use those mark, those courts for free. The club bought the nets, they bought the lines, they maintain those courts. I've just been struggling to accept a high rental rate being asked from this group when the rates do we, and I had a question on whether or not we charge the three-on-three tournament to use the parking lots and then basketball courts?
Well, yes, this discussion is precisely what I mean when I say it's really a values question. It's not a, it's not a business decision. It's a values question, what you want for the community. So your perspective is very different from
Absolutely.
Council beggars. And that's where it's, it's a very much a gray area. And it really does depend on how you perceive it. And again, this, this framework of evaluating things on the cost benefit spectrum is a good way to look at it and to frame it in my thinking about these things. So I felt like this was a good compromise of some people that, you know, would like to see no fees, which is what you've been a horrible precedent here. As then for the past six years, not understanding the concerns about the use of heavily subsidized, let's say, versus, you know, a rate that's actually not profit. This is kind of a break-even point. It's benefiting the community. It's at least recovering our, our maintenance costs, which they are significantly. You know, our crew does a lot of heavy lifting of the sand to get, to get it straightened back out in the pasture.
That's because the courts are for a majority of the time open for our community to use free and clear.
Sure, I'm not, there's no value.
You can attribute that to what they.
Well, the product user is down, so actually they're creating the So it, it's, it's, it's a
Have we heard from, have we heard from, I mean, what, what feedback on this arrangement have you got from the volleyball club?
They, they grant to these terms and these are very.
They're not happy with it. They're, they don't even break even, so additional fees on top of that. They're in support of, there should be a fee, but this amount when they're already running that break-even is a chunk. And those fees get passed on to the other kids in our community. And I would say we should be looking at, how do we use those courts, perhaps with an AAU program or, you know, building out our AAU program, which I'm not sure what else we offer other than basketball in the AAU programs. I heard baseball was not available this year, but we have these courts that have been built. They're used less than thirty percent of the time, reserved. What other things could we be doing with those courts that are open to the community?
I think, you know, Don Morse is valuable real estate. It's, you know, it's really popular for a lot of things. Volleyball group is, is an asset for the community, but, you know, there there's a lot of traffic there, having, having tournaments there, having those things there. I mean, it, it is, it, it does take place. It does probably displace some other businesses that might be there. I think, I think charging some kind of fee is, is nominal. I mean, obviously, put some thought into it. You know, between the tournaments and what these guys, you know, what they bring in in, in fees is, you know, there's, there's considerable value to them. You know, I'm, I'm inclined not to, not to micromanage. Unless I hear strong objections and the volleyball club's not here to give their perspective, but they are upset.
Thank you, Tim. You, you word for me. I don't think the board, the council needs to micromanage one of our department gets over twenty-seven hundred dollars when we deal with twenty million dollars a year worth of overheads. We hired the department to do this for us. And they come up with a recommendation, but we should keep this whatever. So we're not leaving it do.
Wait, I feel like there is a lot of information that was missing as part of this, this discussion. It's my point. There's a lot of data that wasn't there. How did you come about the twenty-seven?
Again, we, we looked at a couple of different things. We looked at cost recovery rates around the country, which could be anywhere from a hundred up to seventy percent. So there's a wide range of what it could be. We look at the Seahawks, the Seahawks club, which is also concessionary with this, which charges eight point four percent. So you can look at, look at, you can look at this issue from a number of different perspectives. We set this rate basically as a compromise between the extremes of what we're hearing from council is what we want and what we value in the community. Is it maximizing profit or is it providing subsidy? It sounds like there's very strong opinions about providing subsidy for this group. And there's also very strong opinions about maximizing revenue for park system. So we feel like this rate is nominal. They might not be happy with it, but they have agreed to it. And it's the cost of, you know, some of these travel leagues for these kids, they're paying twelve hundred dollars a season to, to do this. So they're, these are travel leagues, they're revenues being made and it's.
Not a lot of revenue.
Well, the chart, you know, typically the, the, you know, when you look at percentage of revenues, you're looking at revenue. So you're not looking at expenses. That, that's kind of how they run their businesses, how they run their business. We don't need to be into micromanaging that. They provide scholarships, if they, you know, do other things or they travel, their travel is paid by the kids and not on the books. Or, you know, there, there's all kinds of ways to, to, to slice this. But we feel like this, this rate is nominal and we expect a workshop to really get this kind of feedback. Whereas if we have those kinds of discussions. We heard your feedback and not a huge consensus, but, you know, there's that range and find something in there. And as, as John said, you know, this is a multi-million dollar corporation here and this is kind of around here in the scheme of it. And even the time that you spend working on a small project like this is taking away from, you know, four and a half million of capital projects that we're also simultaneously running. I think that this framework and this articulation of the details and the, and the, and the considerations that are going into this decision are better than anything I've seen in researching of this past stuff. I had to go into a fair amount of research and figure out the exact percentages and what, who contributed exactly what. And, you know, the number, so it's, it's it's, it's not strictly a business decision. Again, it's a, it's a reflection of the values that I'm hearing from your work session and from things now, there's not really a consensus. So unless we have a, a framework for, you know, going through this and taking longer with it and, you know, parse it through the park store and park it through more work sessions and take longer and spend a lot of time on it, we could do that. But we wanted to move on and, and have a compromise of, you know, very high subsidy to start getting a precedent of starting to charge for these things and raise the issue of here's how other departments around the country look at these kind of issues. There's no right answer. You know, Aaron's perspective is just as valid as Chris and vice versa and everyone else. It's just a, it's what you value as a community. And those community values are guiding your decisions, you know, breaking, dividing, sidewalk, street dividing. You know, those are all, there's no right answer. It's your answer that reflects the value of this community. I think this rates is a compromise.
What would be more helpful would be is if there was a, here's a it wasn't specifically one sport. Here's how fields are charged. Here's how et cetera is charged, so that there's a consistency across the board. To me, this just feels like Katus is an area where a contract is up and it's is a one-off, not a framework for rental use of, of parks and fields and whatnot.
So you kind of deal with issues there that come up. We had a contract that expired. If you want to start building this more professionally, you bring each opportunity that in every scale, you start to bring the vegetables in.
But there isn't like a set framework here. It's just, I guess what I'm not understanding is where those numbers.
At the work session.
I have that.
Methodology and know that that's been done, that is that level. We can do that with everything else. We don't do a whole lot of programming in general, working sessions. So there's not a vast list of plenty other things that can do that inform this tremendously. But I, I think we spent a lot of time on this. I'm happy to keep debating it where we can move on with other business.
Yeah, so I guess what I struggle with is you have twenty-five hundred, which is three point six percent, but you're not taking into account the thousand dollars and the fifteen hundred dollars that they already bring to the table.
We are, and I can go through those in detail with you, but it's, it's.
So then it's more than three first, three point six percent?
You know, there are things like rakes and shovels and things that they're counting. You know, in their accounting that we wouldn't necessarily say this is a contribution. These are shovels and makes that we loan and retain them and ship them. So credit that to a contribution. So it's.
It's been in their contract since twenty sixteen, thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars. So it is not like it's nickel and diming all of those things. It's been consistent for eight years. Six, no, six years. And so my question is, is that twenty-five hundred plus another twenty-five hundred? If we're using these percentages, how is that being taken into account?
I think that the, that their maintenance contributions are built into the contract, that they're obliged to provide a a load of sand and we are providing a lot of weather maintenance and spreading that sand. It's been collaborative and been pretty, pretty amicable. So, you know, I talked to Desiree, she signed the contract. She didn't mention anything to me that she was upset about it or had concerns about it. I think there was a shock when we first brought it up because they had been used to having heavily subsidized essentially free use of the courts. And so it was a shock. And in deference to that, we didn't charge anything this year. We kept a very modest rate, I think, for twenty-three and twenty-four. So I think it's, again, it's a a compromise between this extreme spectrum of opinion on council.
I don't think you hear a lot of personal, they, they keep those courts up. They rake those courts constantly when they leave, when they arrive. I mean, there's a lot of time invested in that club. And I don't mean to probably rate to death. I would rather err on the lower end of this and not see it as a moneymaker. This fee is going to be passed on to those kids who are in that program. And in the grand world of club volleyball, Shalan, cost-wise. Shalane, cost-wise, is on the low end of the spectrum. My, for my daughters play club all over. And you can go to Texas and pay $25,000 and be a part of club. You come here, you can be $750, you know, and they're, they compete with those clubs. So passing on, this is definitely passed on to the kids, I guess is what I'm saying. And I think Aaron touched on that as well. So I get it. Um, we have to charge something if we're going to. But we need to stay, um, make sure it's balanced for everybody. So we're going to stick with the 8.4% or whatever and take into account of what they already contributed as part of the contract.
Your document says that they have the, their schedule represents $400 at 3.750 to the year, that's $7 an hour. I'd call that excessive. So if we can move on to the things I need to authorize.
I have a quick comment. Uh, I am not on the opposite end of Aaron's perspective with this, as you're saying. Uh, I've coached youth sports for 18 years, very, all the different sports. I've said skate park many times in these meetings. I've said that our AAU program, which is non-existent, is, uh, totally unfair to kids that live in this community. What I'm mostly concerned about is the parents of fairness when using city property. That's it. I'm not anti this program. It works, it's a high-level program. People from all around the county, counties are trying to get onto our elite program. And so I'm not on the opposite end of the spectrum of parents' perspective on this.
No one would say that you're not a, a huge sports advocate. And everybody knows that. And I certainly didn't mean to put words in your mouth there. What I was saying is just that all of those values are, all of those perspectives are valid. And, um, you know, I feel like this, this rate is a big compromise. And I think this discussion reiterates that, right? That, that shows that there's a wide range of opinion about this. This is striking a balance between, between various perspectives.
Let me just say one thing. Paul's defense, he's, uh, he's here on behalf of a lot of the projects that he's been, he put his time and effort of working this, trying to determine what the most fair price was. And, um, he used, used the methodology that was correct one. And so that's where he is with this. And so one thing to keep in mind, this is a, well, it's a three-year contract. They only be charged for two years. And so at the end of that, we can be real value at either up or down to see if it's a fair rate and something that the volleyball club would look with. So at this point, obviously, it's not our decision at all. It's you all's decision. So, um, I just leave it at that. Just make sure you guys understand how much effort Paul has been doing to try and make this work. So we went to throw the motion where she were at. I move to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the facility use agreement with Con Hail. volleyball club for the use of the volleyball courts at Don Morse Park.
Thank you.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So it passes, we'll move on to the next item. Here I come to sound your order, she may your official project change order number two.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council. The, I'll just start by maybe saying that the change order and the costs associated with the change order before we this evening for the alley project is, is not a surprise. It was a, a change order that we were working on, calculating the cost loading of with the contractor and with our consultants and was accounted for in our overall project budget outlook that was presented on the 24th. So I guess just on the front end, our overall contract budget looks the same as we discussed last meeting. And we consider it fairly favorable, um, given some of the challenges we've encountered. This change order in the 200 block would have, we, the contractor, carried an unknown, you know, the tank, and it was damaged. And, um, some of the contents were spilled into the excavation trench. So we embarked on anyways cleanup effort. There was costs associated with stoppers and standby time. We had to remove and haul and dispose of the contaminated soils that were in the ditch. We had to hire a consultant subcontractor, uh, Gray Mark, I know, services for evaluation, pumping, removal and transportation of the waste contents. Uh, costs for filling a tank with, uh, like a cementous sand, uh, called C D F, and re-excavation of the same area to take additional sweat samples. So in total, uh, it is, um, $19,197.95 for the work associated with dealing with this. Happy to answer any questions.
As they would do the budget?
It fits within the same budget allocation parameters that we've discussed previously.
Change of counsel. As we brought up last time, bringing in a project of the size within 1% of the, uh, initial allocation is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have moved to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute change order number two.
Pump station. Has been privately owned since its construction. And forgive me, I really don't know. Some of the how or whys. On how things have come to be where they're at today, but since 2010. The city has essentially maintained and operated that pump station. And we have customers connected to that pump station by customers. And so. It's been, we've, we've been made aware of this and felt it proven that we work with housing authority. To do what we felt right and mutually beneficial for both parties of the city take. Ownership of this pump station. And have a essentially a permanent easement granted to us to operate, maintain in perpetuity. So there, there are some components that would need to be done to make this happen. There is a, it needs to be metered separately on power. That would be a responsibility to the city. But other than that, we. What might be appropriate, actually, is I'll share a few photos just so you can get a little bit of the frame of reference of. What we're talking about here. Like it's a kind of a garage looking structure. And in it. As a onsite standby generator permanently mounted. And some of the contents in it. Two in series pumps and associated piping and control panel. Where's your thing? So that's, I guess that's it, but. So our thought was we've been working with housing authority, our, our staff and our legal counsel has been working with housing authority staff and their legal counsel. Come up with arrangement that would. Transfer ownership of their infrastructure to us and grant this. So I wanted to just get that information out for discussion. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them before I brought forward a motion consideration. Everything's drafted and ready, but wanted to discuss this. One of the hurdles, I guess. That we run into is we have city customers connected to this compensation that we don't own. Which is a problem and they're at a higher hydraulic grade line that we can serve. With the reservoir that we have in the system. And so. We also have people interested in building homes on adjacent parcels in that area and if. If they need to implement offsite improvements, we don't own a piece of infrastructure that they can actually upgrade to do that. So there, there, there's been challenges that. We've been made aware of and we felt like reconciling, putting effort into reconciling it and what we thought was the best for everybody. So I don't know if that kind of paints a picture. Where we, what we've been trying to navigate, so.
So this pump is, it basically services the higher end of.
Correct.
And probably those other houses that are up at that same elevation because they're at about the same elevation as reservoir.
That's exactly right.
And so, I mean, looking at it, it looks like it isn't a real heavy duty system. Is this something that if. Additional customers were to request service that. We probably have upgrade.
That's correct, yes.
Probably. Is it kind of in its max right now for what it's doing?
Correct, but I'm not sure. There may be additional areas, but for any housing that potentially built up there with like multifamily would be upgraded. And or potentially relocated and the agreement alludes to that. If, if somebody comes in and says, I want to build some multifamily housing here. And I'd rather make the conversation here instead of modifying this one. It also needs to meet our code. It also needs to meet the Department else code. We, it's, it's going to filter through the same things, but. If it makes sense to relocate it, it would be something of consideration for the city as well, but. In an immediate term.
Is there any thought that if a significant development were to occur out there that. Lack of additional reservoir or a higher elevation?
Oh, certainly, yes. And, and that's a great point and one that we don't have the crystal ball, but there's a lot of developable land and when it ever happens. And there are water systems at higher elevations, we could. Potentially feed them lower and do away with this conversation.
So if somebody came in for a permit for additional houses that would require additional water. Under our current policy, especially if they were by developer, they would be on the hook to upgrade this water.
Correct, and there are, there is, I believe, a permit in for some. Homes or apartments or condos, I believe, on, on in this area that would need upgrade.
So it would actually facilitate that if we had the structure already in our ownership.
Right.
Then it would, they could install bigger pumps and perhaps bigger lines.
Yeah, bigger lines, yeah, correct.
No action required.
Yeah, I just, I guess I just wanted to appreciate this discussion. I didn't want to catch you. It's something we've been working, sometimes I forget the. We've been working with our legal councils and trying to hash this stuff out and wanted to just. Not, not ask for much consideration on something that hasn't yet had an opportunity to think about or be informed of, so. You have questions, that come up between now and our next meeting, if you ask me, but hopefully. Bringing forward a, a need easement in an agreement.
He is the American Rescue Plan Act, the special Mr. Perez.
Yes, Mayor Council, we've been looking at this for a while and a few months back, some new guys came out with. Treasury's filed a rule and it's a little confusing, so I'll try and explain. It took me a while to figure it out, but. Basically, they gave you some options of how to report your losses and how to report different things that you wanted to spend your ARP pay funds on. And so they came up with a rule that said if you had a. Ten, less than 10 million lost revenue. You could, or 10 million, I'm sorry, lost 10 million in a grant, ARP a grant, so ours is 1.2 million. Then you could claim the lost revenue up to that 10 million. And so confusing, so I sent it on a couple of webinars and basically what it means is. We can take a standard revenue deduction and what does that do for us? Well, what that does for us is it opens up the aperture of what we can spend our funds for, which is really interesting. We can spend it on any, any government services that we're going to spend money on. What does that mean? Well, parks, rec, road projects, rural housing. The whole list of things and I gave you guys some links and stuff to go to and see what students have been spending on, but. They even spent it on those things. It's maybe even wilder things. I can't believe they've been spending some of this money on, but. So you guys were talking about a lot of different things we could spend on. I pulled up just a Washington state. These cities I've spent this money on, very, but slide here that I printed out, but one of the interesting things was. City Walala is investing 3.2 million to improve local public outdoor areas to provide community gatherings, places. And support recreation, local events and downtown business. That's pretty broad, you know, so that's just an example of how broad that can be. They also dedicated 500,000 to fund a three-year community paramedic program targeting underserved populations. They did utility bill systems. They provided improvements to a local senior center that they needed. And so there's, there's just a lot of things we can spend on. Now, with that in mind. In discussions with Steve here late in the last couple of weeks, he's quantified the different projects that you guys have identified that we. Need and they'd like to spend money on. For instance, the skate park, for instance, we're short on funding for the waterline of the airport. We've got, there's a whole list. Steve, if you've got the fund, you can chime in if you want, please, and some of the other projects we talked about. You still here?
I'm still, I'm still here, I'm still here, Wade. Yeah, so. Yeah, we've got, I sent out a, you know, a little info, a little report a couple of weeks ago. That's why it'll be on the agenda as administrative item on the next, at the next council, council meeting. And, you know, we've got, we've got several projects out there that we don't really have an obvious. Way to, you know, I mean, well, I shouldn't put it that way, that we're, we're not built into our, our CIP last year and. And what we've got right now is, oh, let me see here, about 1.5 million dollars. To, as an estimate for finishing the. The Public Works Building or Parks and Maintenance Building. We've got the Lakeside Trail Grant Match that we talked about and that Jake talked about again tonight. We've got a city share of a match for a Department of Commerce grant at 755. And there's still some details to be worked out on that. We've got a library HVAC prob, replacement. It's a part of a library system funded library remodel and then the skateboard park. At a city share of potential of about 1.5 million. Of a potential three to $5 million project. So none, none, funding for none of those projects was built into our CIP last year. Well. We could talk a little bit at the next meeting about that and how that might all, all happen, but. Anyway, in, in the, you know, our, our proposed funding, we're not, we've not included this. A, this, this, you know, coronavirus relief funding money, so. Is that, does that, have I touched on what you'd like me to touch on there, Wade?
Exactly, Steve, thanks. That's just, I wanted to tee that up. So it sort of comes from what I'm proposing is. That we spend perhaps the August workshop doing a priority, you know, we take some yellow stickies or something and. And list these projects out that you guys have talked about before, we've talked about whether it be a formal housing or a sort of things Steve just mentioned. And prioritize those, understanding what we have and what we have obligation to spend it on. And then make a decision so we can move forward with, with sending this money. We're not under a gun by any means, we're being a gun. You know, we're waiting like six months from now, but we're not under the gun to get these projects funded or going. I mean, I think we have the 2024, 2025 actually completed project, but as you all are well aware, many projects take a long lead time. So we need to identify, hopefully, we want to put this money against. Sometime in the near future, next two, three months or so, we'd like to get that taken care of, so. I just wanted to tee that up tonight as a discussion. You guys can talk about it now, we can do it in August workshop, but. We've talked about several things under those narrow confines. We'll spend them now that's opened up a bit. Hope we can spend this money on, so with that, I'd like to just, you know, put your thinking caps on, think of all what your priorities might be and then. We'll prioritize that and you guys can probably vote on what we'd like to spend the money on so we can spread it out. They don't have to be on one thing, they don't have to be on two things. It could be spread across, be able to spread across several things depending on what the best. Use, the best effect we could have of this, this one-time money. That we, that we have, because I don't think we'll get any more, but you never know. The Mayor Dargo and John will go into the AOC conference next week. We'll get some ideas from our constituents there, our, our fellow administrators and mayors and council members. On some of the ways to spend this and what the best use of it is, so questions for me.
This is a pretty significant change from what we've.
It is.
Four, so it seems like. Probably we weren't the only community that had control figuring out how to use it and obviously Uncle Sam wants to see it get spent, so. Jake, I'm curious. We've got RH2 going ahead on that. Design plan for, for infrastructure out in this road.
Correct, we don't have a signed contract yet, but we should, should expect that in a couple of weeks. It's a, the scope of the work is completed, it's in. It's in their review process and then we'll take a look at it and then we'll certainly have the.
I did, I asked that because it would be nice to, to kind of know. I have a little bit better handle on what that project, you know, maybe this road might be costing.
Right.
To get infrastructure out there.
Yeah, as soon as a, a contract's executed, we'll kind of lose immediately on, on 30%, which I would expect that takes several months.
So is August a realistic?
Potentially, yeah, August, September, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, maybe we'll, we'll discuss that and if we need to potentially even rearrange the scope and put some land, you know. Some timetables in there for deliverables, we could do that as well if it's pertinent to this conversation with the city council and the ARPA funds, too.
I, I'd like to have a better idea.
It's a big unknown, yeah.
Other questions, comments, I just. You guys can email me again, which I think you did several months ago, with your thoughts on this as we move forward and again, with the August workshop. To have a more in-depth discussion and prioritization of the different ideas to spend this, these funds, so thanks.
Move on to Mayor Council comments and we'll start down on the left side with Sherry.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on the CAO and everything. I know you're a busy man, so I appreciate that.
Tim. Zabungel.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for bringing the permission for us. Well, I can do around the microscope thing. But I want to say that, you know, where I am very pleased to be working, right? We have put a lot of effort into it and these kind of discussions. Speaking for myself, probably for some of the council members too, and what we do want to make sure that we are fair. You know, with everybody that we are helping out in the community or subsidizing every community. And it's a whole intention, it's a help everybody by post to be consistent and to be fair and so. Even though you were a little bit by microscope, I think that's how we just try to learn everything that is going out there to make a better decision.
No comment, thank you.
Karen.
Here we go. Okay, I have a couple of things to talk about last, I guess it was two weeks ago now, June 1st. John and I went to the North Central Washington Regional Housing Summit. It was put on by the. Wenatchee Chamber of Commerce and it was a half, well, most. Big part of the day, we were there from eight till 3pm or something like that. It was a wonderful presentation. Several groups came up to us, that well organized. The attendance was fantastic from across our region, just a quick list of some of the. Folks that were there, State Representative Steele was there, the Wenatchee mayor, East Wenatchee mayor, Leonardworth mayor. Two county commissioners, Douglas County Commissioner. East Wenatchee councilperson, Kage Mary councilperson, John and I, and then councilperson from Leonardworth. I had Perry send out the list, there's links to all of the presentations that were went through. The most important one, at least in my mind, and I remember this person was the first deck and it was filled with. A lot of data about the housing situation in. Not only the city of Shalan, but the county of Shalan, Douglas County, and how all of our. Individual cities compare to the state average, to the county average. There's so much information in there that is very valuable. Some of the things I wanted to pull out from that first deck. Is there's a slide on our home value distribution, so. The housing crisis in the city of Shalan, we're middle to top heavy, so 300,000 was the middle on this list. We're 300 and up heavy, we have very little inventory in the 300 and below. The home value appreciation, which I found interesting, Shalan is insignificantly higher than the Washington state average. However, the Washington state average in value appreciation growth is almost double what the US average has been, so. Shalan is staying pretty consistent with how homes are valuing across the state of Washington. Our subsidized housing needs, this is, was calculated that people are earning less than $35,000 per household. We have about 25% of our households here, which is 719 minutes. Of a need in the city of Shalan and some of these numbers you should be remembering when we're thinking about all this development that's happening here. John and I had a great conversation. There's this need that of housing that we have. And it's uncomfortable to figure out how we are going to accept. That amount of growth to address these needs. It's not million dollar homes that we need, it's. A significant number of homes in the lower, lower range of our spectrum. One of the big issues or things to watch out for citizens adjustment to medium density residential and that goes to that point of. It's not something we've seen here and it's uncomfortable to know that that's an area that we need to go. Potential for homelessness to go mainstream for middle income households, well, I think. And there was some really wonderful presentations around creative housing solutions. There were shipping container homes. I got really excited about this concrete homes, it's a. Machine that literally builds a home in 12 hours using concrete. And there, they have costs on cost per square foot on all of these different unique types of concrete homes. One, my main takeaway from this, there was a ton of wonderful information there. But there was a woman who asked a question at the very beginning and it hit the nail on the head for all of this, which is how do these creative solutions? When you build a home that's affordable, how do you, how do you keep it in the affordable pool? And that was where housing trust came in, but it begs the question on, you can't build a community with. Full of subsidized housing, there has to be some other solutions there, so well, there's some really wonderful ideas there. This, the big question of how you keep those homes in the affordable pool without. Some sort of deep restriction or some kind of restriction around that still was not answered for me when I left that, that meeting. If you have not had a chance to bury your head in the ARPA Valley, our future work that has been going on for. Oh, I'd probably say four or five years now, I highly recommend digging into their work. I've been so impressed with what they have been able to pull together with a cross-section of so many different groups across. North Central Washington within Wenatchee, Leonardworth, Ennuiat. They identify their core values, which I think this is something. That would be so beneficial for our city to be working on as we move down the road. And the, in, in our, our value, our future. And these will all sound very familiar, their core values are. Natural environment, small town feel, quality of life, cultural diversity, agricultural. Agricultural heritage, Columbia River, probably not ours. Public infrastructure, economy, healthy living and resiliency. And these are what drive a lot of the decisions that you see these mayors in Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, et cetera. Using that as a guideline and their council and then all the action plans underneath those priorities, so. If you haven't had a chance to dig into higher than that. Did I miss anything? Okay, so that was the housing summit. The other thing that you guys have in front of you is the, I asked the food bank. Based on our conversation, our last discussion that we had around ARPA funding, we spent some time talking about. Solutions that the food bank potentially would be looking for, but without any representation from the food bank, so we were just kind of tossing ideas around. So I met with Jim from the food bank to dig into some of the things that we were tossing around, like. Do they need a new building? Do they need to remodel their building? Do they even want to expand all of those things? So. I've met with him a few times and then I asked him to put this letter together so that we all have this information. My opinion when we were walking out of that discussion was, we were really looking at ways of using that ARPA funding to. Invest in foundational projects that basically give groups. That are helping those that are truly in our community. Giving them a platform to grow and expand beyond that, so essentially what their request was. Is to help fund the phase one of the development of a, basically their engineering architectural plans that would allow them to go out for grant funding. They already have half a million committed from outside. Donations towards once the phase one work gets done, so completion of phase one will allow them to go out and search for grants. And that would be 200,000, so I asked them to put this together, they didn't. I actively searched them out and asked them to put all this together for you guys so that we had. Information when we talked about ARPA funding. So you have that in front of you and then I'll say, Paul, thank you for all your work on the CAO piece. It's a group that sneered here. To me, just because I was on Park Board when those, that group came to us to build those. Fields, I see how many people are there every day in the summertime enjoying those fields or those courts. And so I just want to make sure that we're being, I hope I didn't come across. Micromanaging, but I would, I would love to see a framework where we have it consistently and across all groups that are using our. Our properties within the city and I think that's where you're getting to on this and I appreciate your work on that, thank you. That's all I got.
This afternoon in council chambers, there was a presentation or a hearing, which was quasi judicial from. The Central Washington Hearing Chamber. And there were several. Council people present, we mean, we mean, we mean, we mean each other, so. Don't worry about that. It's a great program, there was about, the chambers were full, so I'm going to guess there was 50-ish people here. And I think the thing that really struck me is how important it is right now. For us to be paying attention to these things. They're looking at rezoning 30 acres out of 190 acres that. Apple Blossom Center to include multifamily housing. And when you go into the, knowing how to do this is probably dangerous, but the county assessor's site, you can get all kinds of information in there. The area next to Walmart is under ownership of a company called Washington Shalan Apartments LLC, which we all know as Winder. And which is one of the largest apartment owners in the country and they said they would be coming back with this rezoning. The other, but the actual person who's looking at the rezoning request about the Blossom Center holdings. Which is a variety of sections. Throughout the remainder of Apple Blossom Center and when you look at the number of acres of 30 acres. It's going to be spread out more than just the Winder property. A very interesting thing that we'll further is to look at east side of Apple Blossom Center. And that's now owned as of two months ago, a company called Shalan Village LLP. And that might replace one of them, it's another that could have come next, and so. With 720 acres on the proposal for Apple Blossom Center holding. We do the math, we're talking about 720 apartments. Even at the minimum of three unit people, three units, that's 2200 people. Shalan's multi-modulation is 4,800, so you're just about increasing the Shalan population by 50% in one fell swoop. They did make it very clear that this would not all be done in one stage, it would be phased in over probably a 20-year period. But that's been on ramifications all across the eastern part of Shalan. Two weeks ago, I went to the Madison Community Council Forum out at Marshall Bible Church. And there was about 150 people that got onto all the Shalan website for a summary of that, I'm encouraged to do so. People in Madison have got, have got the notification. If you go to the Office of Fiscal Management, it shows a full time population of 4,800. This was as of 2020, a full time population in Madison of 4,600. Corroded and I would guess by today, Madison is now where it is. They get it, they understand it, they see it, it's happening and as we were talking about earlier, they're just very excited about the Madison Highway. Very concerned. At the ABC hearing this afternoon, the major issues from the public that came out were sewer capacity, water pressure, traffic flow. Density, so crime associated with density. density, so crime associated with density. And, but, the other thing that happened recently is that the Heritage Heights is sponsoring a festival next Thursday evening. I hope, since those of us are going to Magoo or the Congress, I'll be with Tim. I hope you all got an invitation. It's from six to seven thirty. And Heritage Heights will be talking about their upcoming purchase of the F and B Suites Hotel. So, that's, that's a big issue also. My last point I'll put in is I believe you, is I think we need to get a grant writer to correct all these things. Somebody that knows what to say, knows what to not say, fluid approach, how you approach it, and say all the right keywords and push all the right buttons. Maybe we should have wanted to count them, so. Excellent. Thank you.
We're on a witch hunt for money for the airport water system. We have sent in on Public Health Trust Fund. I don't know how Travis came out on that spring like computer itself. And then we worked on, occurred with the Port District. We, I went down and sent in with Jim Coons on that one. There's a lot of loose ends out there that appears with the evaluation, we need to come up with seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars or a conglomerate of funding to assist both the board and the city and make them just work. But we're on track on that. There's a couple of loose ends that we haven't tracked down. We've worked on them along with some other ones here shortly. The Madison Community Council, I've got a real Western Diana Walters, who is a county assessor and acting community development director on, when you have a development, come to town, you better be paying attention. You've got one shot to get your own comments, and after that, it's over. And then no one just say, don't like the project. And as the people, they said it was a matter of density or whatever else. So, it was over to just say, hey, this project, don't do it. To me, seven hundred and twenty units is overkill. I understand there's a possibility they may consider doing this stage process, which would make it a lot more palatable. So, someone I would hope, other than John and I, would go to the last meeting of council. We're both going to be gone. Kevin will be asking this morning if we're going to attend, and that's going to be an impossibility. So, if someone's interested in how that project is going and how, why we work on the DOT, it would come to be a good idea for somebody to attend.
And then that?
I am not. I'll find out. It's usually a Tuesday, but third Tuesday.
Oh, you're not.
Next Tuesday, we have such a blog at the Parks Department.
So, I encourage you to go early because they didn't tell me how to that place, maybe. I think maybe there's enough people, unless in last week, he probably won't be back, because it's touching the bill. You never know. They drew a lot of people out, and a lot of people walk out. I understand now. So, it's just that it's numbers, the more numbers, the more clout you have, no matter what you're doing.
At the end, it did a killer job. She did this great.
So, that's about it right now for what's going on. We're currently waiting for people.
Okay, we'll start with Jake. Anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss one quick thing. We, we have an equipment replacement fund that we use the fund for replacement of our equipment. And we have, kind of, we've been, we rearranged it every year based on conditions of equipment, often extending or expediting replacement and updating numbers. Next year, we have a big year. We, we're, two critical pieces of equipment. We are replacing our hydrovacuum excavator and our street sweeper. And as you're likely aware, we don't have a budget yet, but it's in our plan and will likely be brought forward this fall as a memorialized in our capital plan. But equipment lead times are long, and we've been shopping and trying to get final numbers, and, and most, both either of these pieces of equipment are six plus, six to eight months out likely from the day that we say order. So, our thought was, is to get them coming. We don't have any financial obligations until they arrive, so it would fall within the fiscal year that they're budgeted, and we would have them available to us to utilize early in the year opposed to later in the year. Both. I just felt like they're, they're important enough pieces of equipment, whatever we can do to help navigate some of the lead time issues we're seeing. We'd like to do that. So, unless council has objections, it's kind of our, our game plan at this point. I will note that I think the street sweeper will probably fall within what we anticipated. We may be looking at twenty percent or so increase on the hydrovacuum excavator. It's something that we can we can update certainly, but we will be looking hard at equipment replacement costs, how we might continue to for our equipment upfront. So, that sounds like a little game plan.
Supply chain doesn't exist right now, so I totally agree with that idea.
Yeah. And we, we even, you know, the, the, we go through like these pre-competitive processes. So, the prices are what the prices are. We don't have any negotiating power. It's like, it's a, it's a we used to do a company called Sourcewell, and and they're, they're like, well, even if you change your mind, we'll sell them like tomorrow, you know, so. So, they didn't even really tell us that we needed to have a firm commitment financially, but we felt like it would create a good outcome. So, I'll say, we'll do it. Thank you.
Great, Paul. Yes, this Thursday in this room, at six to eight P M, we'll have a parks forum on Lakeside Park improvements we're looking at through the grant spending. We're moving forward permitting. But we still want to get public input. Some of the parameters for that project are, are pretty established, but there's we still want to get as much public input as we can. And then Saturday, we'll do a session onsite, and that will kind of provide an overview like this one, but we'll also focus more on the playground thing. So, if kids can attend that one, it'll be more of a fun session to see what kids want in the playground as well as have an overview of the program and an opportunity to provide insights from the public. So, hope that you can make it and bring your neighbors and friends, and one of them to go back to the same. And I think that's all I have for now.
Of course.
Well, of course, thank you, Wade. Albatross is going to be open on Father's Day, and it's pretty, pretty exciting process. They're moving along. And I think more in the creative cleanup phase now. I think most of having the lifting has been done. So, looking forward to a successful program. I think they're already accepting reservations, so I'm not going to book those now. The Parks Maintenance Building, we had very low turnout for bidders. A bad time of year, a lot of threats. This is a hard time in the construction industry. So, we're looking at a value engineering process with the main bidder and explored with other bidders who came to pre-bid meetings, but ultimately didn't provide a bid. So, we're kind of gathering intelligence of what exactly, you know, why are, why are the rates high? What are you afraid of? What are the concerns? A lot of it is really unknown, or why, you know, not wanting to be stuck with liquidated damages for things that are outside of their control, which is understandable. So, I think to the degree that we can be super flexible with that kind of thing, we'll do well. So, we're, we're still gathering information, and we'll want to take it back out to the, I think the numbers are too high or really realistically entertain at this time above what we're anticipating and what I think the market can get down significantly through understanding why they were high and avoiding those things in the future, much as all the works building on through value engineering and these kind of things, this one too, and through the same. So, we'll, we'll keep you, keep you updated as, as we gather more information and come up with a game plan for putting it back out there.
Thank you. Louis? I do, thank you, Bertos. Steve?
I don't have any, anything else, Wade. Thank you very much.
And not a lot else on what staff I've had, as long as it's not like one. We have, Lewis forgot to mention that we have a new hire coming aboard in the finance department, starting next Monday, so we'll be sure she's getting on board. I'm very happy to get that, but the few of our between out there, so Louis worked hard and got some with you. And we continue across the board, you know, making sure we keep people on board and struggle to meet our mission of serving the city with inflationary costs, fuel costs, that you got a third of doubled, so let's fit that budget. And figure struggle with that. Steve's helping us with that, make adjustments. So, and speaking of Steve, I encourage you all to, as he puts out this data on the, on the budget, the different numbers for both outgoing and outgoing, and where we are, please take a look at it as you, as he put out the information on the projects and sources of funding, how we can do that source, possible source of funding. Please take a look at that, so we engage you guys with that. You can have a really good discussion, because it's important going forward for the city of funding those projects, what we can and can't do. That's all I have.
Hey, with that being said, I will recess. The city council, the airport bargaining, and after two minutes.
I'm going to do for the minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty.
On favor. Oh, so that, is that agenda?
I'm going to go to the consent agenda. Second.
On favor.
Alright.
Post, very good. With that being said, airport bargaining, city council meeting for a general, thank you very much. Airport manager, that's a good one. I'm younger right here, too. I've got a roll up there. Everybody was moving on.
I did. I was about to go.
Still not liking that new hip yet. It's, it's a, it's a problem, but we'll get there.
Yours was a scam, right?
Right here.
This time, you have a couple of others. I don't know if you ever set one.
Yeah. Yes, he ever is.
He has his central.
Just hang on. We're hanging on.
Now, Patty, I say it, but I really, I just have to what I might cover.
But I don't get it. I feel really bad. I told you. It should be on the public.
That's where I saw it.
Based on your website that says public notice.
Well, we also, we also have to be sensitive to that, so we're working with work. I want to make sure we're doing just only all those. One special one, and not do it to somebody else. I got it actually, all of these.
Well, it should be, it's, I think it's in your code that says that you're supposed to.